Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today's work session is a focus on the coordination of care and services for vulnerable seniors. As with all of our work sessions, they are for informational purposes only. We don't take any action in our work sessions. We also don't take any public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment, we welcome you at our 5:30 business meeting. We have a section for public comment and you may provide your public comment there. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill Joliker and Jill will get our presentation started.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today's conversation was requested by members of the Commission as an update to what has been several years of work to better understand how to best support vulnerable seniors and vulnerable individuals with underlying disabilities in our community that more often than not are being served more often by emergency services. And for several years, we've been trying to experiment with how to serve those folks better. And at the same time, just understand what the need, try to get a sense of the depth and breadth of the need. And we've been iterating over the course of the last few years. The Commission added an additional staff for a Project Lively position with JAA the year before last. And we've been using our My Resource Connection data sharing platform in partnership with Johnson County to learn more. And we've been, some other iterations have happened, but in the last year with Chief, Division Chief Darling kind of leading the charge and asking a lot of questions with the team of folks that he works with, along with Megan Poindexter, the staff at JAA and the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, that the group has really gotten to a new level and they're really, I think, zeroing in on where the gaps, where the opportunities, still want to make sure that we're talking about where the weaknesses are. But again, really focusing on the opportunities that are coming into perspective. And with that, I'm going to let John and Megan introduce themselves and then they've got a presentation that I'm going to click through today.
Good afternoon, I'm Division Chief John Darling for LDCFM.
I'm Megan Poindexter. I'm the Department Manager for the Senior Resource Center, a Department of Douglas County. So, thank you for inviting us to come this afternoon to talk about what we've been working on. I know that many of you are aware of the iterations that have kind of come before, but we want to give a little bit of just an update on what's going on. So, for our outline of the conversation today, we're going to provide a little background for anyone who is not as familiar with what's come before. The reporting process, an explanation of the reporting process, some explanation of the three teams coordination, as we call it, the impact that we're starting to see develop, some self-assessment findings from a recent meeting, and some opportunities of what we hope for for the future. So I'll start us off by just giving a little bit of background, primarily because I've been fortunate enough to be involved with a good deal of history. And as people have moved through different positions here in Douglas County, I'm kind of one of the last ones standing at this time who is still here and has that historical knowledge available. So, Project Lively program was a program of the Health Department when it was called the Health Department. And a few years ago, that was moved over to the Jayhawk Area Agency on Aging in collaboration with the Health Department. We've continued to evolve how Project Lively represents the vulnerable, most vulnerable of the vulnerable seniors in Douglas County. And, oh gosh, it's been four years ago, it was during COVID, that all blurs together, that we really started talking about the mobile integrated health concept. And so, the goal to bring those two individuals on took a little bit of time simply because of the challenges with hiring that was happening during COVID. But those two individuals are also involved now. And then the Lawrence Douglas County Public Health recently became more involved and has really rounded out what's going on with what we now call three teams. And the three teams is basically because we didn't know what else to call it. And, and that is what it is, call it what it is. We've got three teams of professionals who are working in collaboration, really trying to communicate well, to identify the individual needs that people have, as well as larger strategic goals to improve the outcomes and the well-being of individuals throughout Douglas County, many of whom are seniors, just as, as we'll get into with some of the data that's been pulled together. It's not just seniors that are really kind of coming to light with this, but it is a lot of seniors. So, with that, I'm going to hand this over to my colleague, John Darling.
Yeah, so the first thing we want to do is go ahead and talk about the goals for how we get people on our radar for services. The goal of our process, at least from the MIH side and the other three teams, is we want to reduce the inappropriate use of EMS in the emergency department. And what we mean by that is people who aren't getting the help they need by being put in an ambulance and taken to the emergency department, it's a great deal of expense and it's a great deal of demand on our system. And there are many people who do need those services and we want to continue to provide them. But for people who maybe there are better paths for them, we want to make sure that they know how to get to those paths and we help find the gaps where they're not getting the better path and bridging those and connecting them to the correct resources. So, when we're trying to figure out, you know, who, as Megan said, the most vulnerable, the most vulnerable, we start with the people who are using 911 because they don't have other resources available. So it starts with 911 calls. And then, what we have is called the Community Outreach Referral Form, or CORF. That's basically a form that our first responders, EMS providers from LDCFM, as well as other county fire agencies will submit. So what you see up there is a sticker that we have laminated and provided to all, that's on all of our fire trucks, it's in all the fire stations, it's been provided all the fire, county fire agencies with a QR code so that they can use that to get to the form to fill out because we're trying to remove barriers to entering people. So if you have to wait and go back to the station and find your email and find the link and click on that, that's a lot of places for people to fall off. So we want to make it as easy as possible. Yeah, so we said, put the QR stickers up. We've also got the links posted to our own LDCFM internet. We also have, I'm trying to remember what the next thing was. Yeah, another thing here, we want to make sure it was something that you could fill out on your phone. It's not something that you have to be on a computer to because a lot of our, especially our first responder communities don't have access to it, they're not going back to a fire station after the call. And having it on their phone is a key part of making sure we let them report people when needed. And then, the one thing with this is we have limited this so far strategically to our fire and EMS responders because it would be very easy if we opened this community wide to be overwhelmed. And we were trying to triage based on the people who have the most acute need, which is the people who are actively using 911 services because they don't have other options. So the next page, this is just an example of how extensive that form is. I took multiple screenshots to fit it all on the page. And the idea is we want to make sure that when we have active knowledge of a person, we can collect as much information as possible. But if you notice in very, very tiny, you can see little tiny asterisks next to the number. Those are the actual required fields and it's very few. Because if all you have is like basic information about a patient, who they are, where they are, and some description of what's wrong with them, we can take it from there. Our teams are really good at going out aggressively getting that information, but we don't want to limit that. So we offer lots of opportunities to give us additional context. Because the more of this we get, the more able, we're able to fine tune the resources, get them connected to their help they need faster and more efficiently. So, the way this process works, we start with a 911 call. So in this here, you see, we've got illustrated with an ambulance. But again, to be clear, it's not just ambulance crews. It's any fire or EMS agency in Douglas County has access to this form. Then they can fill out that CORF form as you see there, and it gets put into a SharePoint list, which I'll show here in a second. That SharePoint list in term is how it gets on the radar for all three teams to really have this person as somebody we want to address and connect them with the appropriate resources. In the meantime, we are bridging the gaps. So we are finding like what needs to happen right now to keep stabilize them and get them the help that they need right now, and then also connecting them to the next resources. So that can be things like social service agencies, alternate living arrangements, in-home health, behavioral health, primary care, there's lots of different ways that they can get connected. And that's, there's more than that that we connect them to, these are just some examples. So this was the initial plan and it worked really well. We found that we wanted to augment that. So, we have what we're calling outreach now because every person who becomes an EMS patient, they get a patient care report. And there are oftentimes where someone is using our services more than you would typically think. And any one time we see them, it may not trigger the alarm bells for the crew seeing them because we have different crews that might respond. Somebody might call 911 three times in one week, but the same people never see them more than once. So now our MIH team every Monday will go through and they'll pull the last week's worth of patient care reports, looking for people who are using our resources more than we, they have in the past. And then that's how we develop what we call our outreach list. So these are people that haven't been reported by CORF, but they still then get put into the SharePoint list and then get to the process of bridging gaps and connecting with resources. So this is sort of like the backstop to the CORF that we're still focusing on 911 calls and that's how these people are showing up on our radar. But we want to make sure that we're not, just because we didn't happen to have the exact same group of people, we're not missing anybody. So that's the process, super simple. Then we talked about the SharePoint list. So, to be clear, this is not the actual list because that has a lot of HIPAA stuff in it. So instead, what we have is we built basically a duplicate of that in our environment here to show you. So, but we've changed the names, we've changed the dates of birth, we've changed personal data information, but all of the stuff in there is based on real cases that we've seen. And also, this is just six people, the real list has way more people than this. So if you see here, we start out, every time we get that CORF, they immediately get put in. And the second from the right column says Manning Insuring Organization, right here it's blank. So it's unassigned, this is sort of the inbox that the patients get put into. That way they're on our radar. And then, as we have capacity, one of the teams, whichever of the teams has the capacity to deal with that person, you know, as fast based on the needs that are reported, that's how they go. And then they will then tag themselves as being responsible for that patient so we know who's running point. So they start here, and if you don't mind clicking, you'll see, yeah, that's the unassigned right there. And then, we also have referral source being outreach. So in this particular case, this is someone who didn't get a CORF submitted for them. But if you see in the notes, it says this is a patient that had two lift assists last week. We're not quite sure why they needed to be lifted twice. It might have just been a bad week, but it's somebody we think, hey, we've never really seen this person before, now they're falling twice in a week, is there something going on? And now they're on our radar. So with just two, we may have other priorities that we don't get to like right that same day. But now that they're on our radar, if this person has a third or fourth EMS incident, even if it also doesn't seem that bad, that'll bump them up on their priority list for outreach. So, if we can move on to the next. So, in this case, I'm taking some examples from the MIH, that now the MIH is the point. But as you'll see, it's not just MIH, even though MIH is point, all of the agencies still work together and collaborate. So, here you see, I've got two examples that would have been submitted by CORF, one that would be an outreach attempt. So if we'll pop that up, you can kind of see, as we pop them up, you can see, there's a bunch of the information from the CORF. You'll see a case description there, and that's sort of like the game plan of, hey, this is just a quick description of what's going on and what this person needs. And then, in the comments, this is what's really helpful is we have a running sort of text exchange that all of the team members can see. So we're already getting this information in our own proprietary record systems. But right now, if this is a Project Lively patient, we don't have to call Project Lively to find out, hey, where are you at? It's all right there. And especially because a lot of the things that these teams are working on together can be referrals that take a while. It's really good, helpful to have everybody on the same page of, okay, here's where we're at, here's the next step, here's who we're contacting, and so we can really cover for each other. It makes things a lot more efficient. So another example, this is one to kind of show how it can go because some of them we only touch once or twice. This is a, this is a real case for somebody who we saw a lot. So this was a subject that was found in the bathroom, unable to stand. Their home was heavily infested with bedbugs. It's to the point where the patient had lost so much blood, they had to go to the hospital for that. So, one thing we want to be very clear on is the MIH program doesn't eliminate all ambulance transports. This is someone who 100% needed to go to the hospital. But in years past, there wasn't, we know this person has bedbugs, but that's not a thing the hospital fixes. So we stabilize them, we send them home, more than likely they're going to come right back into that same cycle. Now we have a process to reporting them so they're on the radar. So the same time that the crew took them to the hospital, they also put them on our radar. And so MIH then is watching them through LMH. So if you can click to the next one here, you can see, what you'll see here too, these are all show me and they show they all happened at the same time because I built this as a demo. But in real life, you'd see like one of the MIH members posted, hey, this patient was hospitalized for bedbugs. They are getting discharged today, we're going to go meet them today, do an assessment, find out what happened. And because what I really appreciate about these teams, and I'm very proud of my MIH team in particular, is they're aggressive problem solvers. We didn't know how you got exterminators, this is the new problem to find out. So, if you can click through that. So next, we go out there, and this is another thing, this was a note that was put in by one of the Health Department workers, that hey, we went out with MIH to do that initial assessment, found out that Adult Protective Services had been involved. Okay, so now we have a link of how to get that. And so now we're going to clarify and connect those dots, try to get that extermination process going. After that, you'll see here, this is a joint note that the MIH and the Health Department filled out, where hey, we went out, met them yesterday, we're working on getting all the paperwork that's necessary to get that extermination completed. We also realized that this person doesn't have Medicare or Medicaid, they'd lapsed. And so now, the Health Department is working with Heartland Community Health Center to get them connected to the insurance services that they're going to need. So what we see is this person's on our radar, now we're kind of surrounding them with all the resources that they're going to need to kind of get them to a better and more stable condition. So.
May I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
In situations where an individual does have insurance, are you also connecting with their payer to work with case management?
Yes, yeah, and every case is different. What we do find is that a lot of the people that we end up don't have that, it's very, you don't lose.
The case management that comes through Medicaid is not really case management, it's care coordination. And those are individuals that are only required basically to, you know, go out for those short visits, just twice a year maybe. And they can be helpful when information is brought to them, brought to light. And sometimes they can find some funding sources for things like extermination or some of these one-off types of situations. But their caseloads are, you know, 150, 200 or more. And, and then there are some individuals who fall into this category who have case management, maybe from another organization in the community. And so, part of what the three teams individuals, whomever is running point for that person would be doing is trying to find out, is there somebody else? Is there existing case management from Burt Nash or somewhere like that that we can hook into? And that's sometimes part of the challenge. We don't want to add just another person in that individual's life and duplicate the efforts. And that can also exhaust a patient or a person who's, the individual who's receiving services if they have too many well-meaning caseworkers in their life. So really trying to make sure that, that we're identifying and pulling from the best resources possible.
And for those that are Medicare or dual eligible, if they do have a benefit that has like home remodeling or has.
Medicare doesn't cover things like that, so.
Medicare Advantage, I'm sorry, like Medicare Advantage, so there are benefits.
There are, there are some advantage plans that might have, might be able to help with that.
Yes, yeah, there are. So yeah, so are you connecting in those situations where they might have benefits available?
Yeah, I mean, if there is, if there is an advantage plan in play that would have something like that, we would. Those are just not terribly common in this community.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Appreciate the questions and, you know, a lot of what we're still doing is learning all of the places that we can find resources and find connections to get those things done. A lot of what it is too for us is we're, we try to be really short-term where when we get somebody else in that position, we then have connected them, we do that warm handoff and move on to the, because we have a fairly decent caseload that keeps coming in, that we need to be able to do that. So we want to make sure they get the help that they need and the care that they need. But as we start to find people like that, as you'll see through this, we then do that handoff. So, in this case, the next progress note was MIH saying, we talked to this patient by phone, said we haven't seen a live bedbug since the extermination was done. And then, a big problem this patient had is they weren't sleeping. So they got a full night's sleep for the first time. You can see they put explanation points in there, they were so excited, this person finally got a full night's sleep, which is really important when you think about what's required to heal after a condition like this. And then, as you see, they even talk about, okay, now that we've got that problem resolved, now we're starting to talk about educating the patient on self-care, self-management, getting, okay, now we've stopped the thing that's holding you back, how do we transition you to be able to function, if not independently, then at a higher level with a more long-term solution? So, the next note, sorry, I can go back one. You're good. So the next one was like, hey, we've made significant improvement on their wound care. So we know that MIH's no longer needed for the wounds, that the patient had wounds on their legs and feet that had been healing, so now that patient no longer needs our services in-home for that. So then we've given him connections to social services to work on continuing the Medicare application, the warm handoff to Heartland Community Health Center for the ongoing care of the medication needs and wounds. And so at this point, that's our kind of like capstone note where we're wrapping up care for this patient. And so if you don't like pushing forward one, and that's how this patient then goes to the closed status. And so, the important thing with that is, we keep them closed so they don't necessarily show up every day. But then if we get another referral, then, because a lot of times people, they get stable for a while, then they may kind of have another issue come up. Now we have all of that backstory that really helps us figure out what's going on with the patient that we didn't have before. And that's already been key for several patients where we can like, we're not starting from square zero. Because if you imagine if MIH held this patient and we dealt with them, got them off our caseload, closed the case, well then the next time they pop up is Project Lively. If you don't have that resource, it might take a long time because sometimes our patients aren't the best, like historians and telling us what's come before. And that really, again, helps get that efficiency down, which is what we're looking for. I think that, yep.
Okay, so how. How do we get this organized? That's been one of the challenges. The My Resource Connect and the SharePoint has allowed us to have what we, our Monday morning meetings, right? So what the three teams individuals are doing is getting together via Teams every Monday morning and they're going over who the new cases are, who the existing cases are, any updates, if they've closed anyone. And so, I just want to take one step back, I think I failed at the very beginning, to make sure we're clear as to who the individuals on these three teams are. So, for Project Lively, there are two social workers. And so these individual social workers are really looking from their lens and their training and skillset there. We've got our two paramedics through MIH, they've got their professional lens and their skillset. And then the Health Department has contributed to staff in the last year that have been fantastic. We've got a community health worker and an APRN. So, they have really great skills that are somewhat unique to what they can bring to the table. So when you put all of those skillsets around the same table, you've got different lenses, different models of care, and it allows some fantastic conversation and brainstorming and troubleshooting for figuring out an individual person's needs and what they might need in order to move forward.
I have a question on some of the like not truly medical needs that maybe come up that I think were some of the things that would fall between the cracks before a program like this. So is that like where the community health worker comes in? So you're talking about like falls, like are there a lot of tripping hazards? Like that's not really a health thing, but it's making for a health outcome?
Yes, that's an example of what might fall into the community health worker or to Project Lively, kind of depending on the circumstances. And because Project Lively is restricted to people that are 60 and over, sometimes those needs, you might think of them as a need for an older adult, but it's somebody who's 55 and just, that's where they are in their aging and their life. And so it allows a lot of flexibility in that regard. So those Monday morning meetings, it's reviewing the active cases and any new cases. And then what we've added in the last couple of months is a quarterly meeting of the three teams together with their supervisors. And I think that's a critical component because we need to make sure that the individuals that are providing this frontline service have the support from their supervisors for what they're dealing with. This is really intense work, it's very high burnout work. And so that's part of where my passion in this comes in is, I've observed Project Lively over quite a few years now. And, and the reason that we even got to this current iteration that we are in right now was a conversation about why does, why does Project Lively have such a hard time keeping staff for very long? And it was because of a really high burnout rate. And so, we created a whole lot of guardrails and supports for those individuals, and the proof is in the pudding. We've got staff that have now been with Project Lively for probably a record amount of time. So, that's really exciting. And coming around the table with their supervisors gives us an opportunity to really look strategically at what our goals are, how are we accomplishing it? What are the, the technical changes that need to happen in order to find success? What are those adaptive changes as well? And so we've been able to do some course correcting as we go, it's, we're in a work in progress. This is all experimentation. And so trying to identify what's the next right thing to do to help move this project along. We've had three meetings so far of this group and they've all been fantastic.
People can always, always have the right to refuse care. When, when people are offered services like this, are they generally interested and glad for that? Or do you have some folks who say not interested?
Absolutely have folks that say we're not interested, 100%. We'll talk about that more later.
I got a couple of questions. How has your group's role changed, if any, since you became a county department?
I have, I think, the coolest role of this whole situation. I get to, Jill asked me to basically facilitate these quarterly conversations and I kind of play point within the three teams to help make sure that everybody's being heard and their needs are being met and we're, we're working towards those larger goals. So that's my role.
And the other question I had is, how many people are we talking about that are in your system?
Oh, I think that we're getting to that, aren't we, John?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. You ready?
Yeah, so, before we get there, and if I don't, by the end of it, snag me. I wanted to show another example, that was one where I was really showing the communication tool, but also how we worked within there. This is another case that I wanted to show as an example of how all three teams really do come together for a person with complex needs. So this is, I'm calling her Lucy, that's a very complex case. It's a person with, has dementia and other serious medical concerns, but not at the point where they, you know, can have like, you know, necessarily legal guardianship put on them. It's also somebody who has both unstable housing and unstable food supply, someone who has a fall risk, and someone who is having issues getting on benefits for a variety of complex reasons. So obviously, that's someone who's having a lot of trouble. So, from November to December of 2024, this patient called EMS four times in one month and ended up being hospitalized with sepsis. Patient got out and had been put on the CORF radar at that point, had 15 contacts by MIH and others. I was looking at MIH data, but when I say MIH, all of the teams are involved in that. And so a lot of times we co respond, we'll have like a Project Lively or a Health Department member role with one of our MIH team to get there. I was just looking at MIH data. So we had 15 contacts with this patient in the next three months, and we had three EMS calls. So this is someone who's still using EMS and may still have some legit problems who needs to use EMS, but we've gone from four calls a month to three calls in three months, that's a 75% decrease. So, unfortunately after that, in March, the patient got hospitalized again with pneumonia and was discharged, but was discharged with in-home care from the VNA. And so that basically took care of a lot of those needs for them, but that sunset. And so in May of 2025, the patient is once again calling EMS, called EMS four times again in that month and got reactivated on the CORF board because we did that outreach. I don't know, I don't know if this patient actually got another CORF or just because of that backstop outreach, but got reactivated, so now this person's on a radar. And so since then, from May 25 to the present, that we've been out 20 times. Like I said, that's more than we normally see people, but this is again a complex case. But the key thing is, zero EMS calls. So for the first six months of November 24 until May, we were, saw her 11 times, got hospitalized twice. That's not someone who's got a very good quality of life, there's lots of problems going on. Here, we're still investing a ton of resources in, from the MIH and three team side, but we're no longer, this patient's no longer getting sent to the hospital. We're able to intervene and keep them at a higher quality of life as we get them. We're working still to get them transitioned to a more stable, long-term solution. But that's exactly how it's supposed to work. We went from 11 calls in the first half to zero in the second, that's, that's the whole goal of this program. And so in this, what you see is, three teams, each one of the teams brought their own strengths to bear. So you had Project Lively. Sorry, so MIH did the medication reconciliation and management, and then also helped with resource navigation. And then also coordinating care with multiple physicians, so we're coming at it from that medical side. The Health Department was able to bridge the primary care physician gap because we have that APRN, and then also able to help with Medicaid as application assistance. And then Project Lively and the SRC is helping with case management and is also helping with like trying to work on facility placement. So this is a patient who definitely needs a lot of help, but we have now the resources in place to connect them to that help and keep them out of that EMS, emergency department cycle, which both is resource intensive for us, but also doesn't get them what they need. So that was there. So now we're going to kind of talk about just the impact that we're having. So this first chart, this is year to date. And what I'm looking at is the percentages of course and where they're coming from. Because one of our big things is equity. This isn't a program just for residents of the city of Lawrence. So we're looking at where we're getting these. So the, the blue bars is the percentage of course that are coming from these places. And then the orange bars are the relative population. So what you see is that Lawrence is about 80% of the population. We send about 87% of course from there. Baldwin City, Udora are about comparable. Then of course to get being comparable to population. LaCompton, we're actually getting more course than you'd think for the population. Unincorporated Douglas County is still a known hole in our system. We are still working, like we have our county fire chiefs meeting next tomorrow night. And we do kind of talk about this, and I'm going to give an abbreviated version of this talk to kind of explain the backstory to them. And then also, there also may be something where people who live in rural areas do tend to probably be somewhat healthier than people who are maybe receiving services in the city. So we think there's probably work to be done there. I can't promise that we're going to get it down to exactly 1.9%. Or exactly, sorry, we'd get 10% of course from unincorporated Douglas County, but that's a known area that we're working on. The next thing I want to look at here is the total number of L D C F M incidents. Because if you remember, we've talked a lot about how our call volume has been growing. So I wanted to incorporate current year data. So what you see with this bar here, so the, the, the line graph on, on the right is I took at 0700 hours on October 29th of each year, how many calls total had L D C F M run? And just seeing what we're, what kind of impact we're having. And so what you see is 21, 20, 21, 20, 22, 20, 23, we're going up at a rate of about 8.2% per year. That's then from 23 to 24, we bend that curve down till we're now, we're only going up at about 4.5%. And from 24 to 25 year to date, we're at 1.3%. And what that looks like overall is if we ran 1800 calls last year, if we were continuing to grow at an 8.2%, that's about 18, sorry, 1500 calls per year that we would be growing if we kept the, the, the rate of rise from those first three years. However, if we're only growing at 1.3%, we're growing incidents by 230 calls a year. So that's a significant change. Obviously, we're not going down yet. I think there's obviously more work to be done. But that's a big difference that we're making. And I don't say that that's M I H that's making it. It's, I would, I would say that it's very hard to prove causation instead of correlation. But if you look at the resources that this community is putting into getting people that connected to the right care through M I H, S R C and J AAA and Project Lively, through the health department, also through things like T R C, Burt Nash, all these other agencies that we're Oh, yeah. And yeah, Radac, there's all these different resources that are being brought to bear. And I think we could probably speculate that a good chunk of that change is due to the collective effort that we're doing, even though I can't tell you exactly how many calls M I H personally headed off, if that makes sense. And so, you know, there's more work to be done there, obviously, but I think that that's, we're finally starting to bend that curve in a time I would speculate based on like economic indicators, if anything, call volume should be going up. So I think that I'm pretty happy with how that is, although there's obviously more work to be done.
Are the types of calls that you're seeing based in Lawrence, right? And then Baldwin City, Udora, LaCompton, and the unincorporated area? Are those types of calls very different? So like, are you seeing more falls, right? In Baldwin, Udora, LaCompton, or the unincorporated area? Are you seeing more? Yeah, just like, are the types of calls different?
I don't have that data immediately at hand. Part of the issue will be just that because we have a much smaller call volume coming from those areas, you may see some discrepancy from that. I can get that information though. And we, we do tend to look at like the most common calls overall, like falls, system wide tend to be. I can't tell you, for example, there's 85% of them come from Lawrence versus a slightly lower percent elsewhere, but we can definitely get that for you.
Okay, because it'd be interesting, because the comment that you made was that you tend to see healthier in the unincorporated area, right? So I think that was just an interesting comment that you made. And so I would be interested in understanding the types of calls that you have in the unincorporated area and in these other cities versus Lawrence, just to see the types of calls that you have. And then when we think about comorbidities, right? Are the individuals in these areas healthier when we think about their comorbidities? And why are they actually calling you? Are those calls different for the non-emergency needs, right? Versus the individuals that are actually calling from Lawrence? Are they calling for different reasons, right? Are they calling because they need transportation, right? Is it a transportation issue from the unincorporated area? Are they calling for other reasons versus in Lawrence, right? Is it a medication reason? Or maybe from the unincorporated area, maybe they do need transportation, right? Because they are so far away from healthcare access. So I'm just kind of curious as to what, what the reasoning is for some of those calls. Megan?
I think one of the challenges to really assess that information out is the, just the longitudinal. You know, we, we don't have that, that much data yet. We are really working on it and things are starting to bubble up. I can tell you anecdotally from my experience, both as the director when I was at Trinity and Home Care, as well as my experience at the Senior Resource Center, that individuals who, seniors who are becoming more frail that live in the unincorporated areas tend, that's the, that's the moment that they move when their health starts to fail because they're not able to maintain in that home. And places like Trinity and Home Care, in-home support agencies really struggle to provide in-home supports in rural areas. And, and I mean, that's a totally different conversation. But just without having any hard numbers, I, I think that this is why that suspicion about being a little bit healthier if you are still able to maintain in those more rural areas.
That's what I'm kind of wondering. So are there more needs around home remodeling, right? Some different supports to help individuals age in place, right? Whether it be grab bars, right? Different items on the floor, right? So they're not slipping and falling. You know, support around steps, right? Different, different types of home remodeling supports so that people can age in place if that is a choice that they actually want to pursue.
I would definitely agree, though, that a lot of it is transportation. And a lot of it is access to assistance, just generally assistance of a whole lot of different types. In-home care, home health, even getting someone to come out and put grab bars in. It's just harder to get things done when you're in the unincorporated areas than when you're in the city to get a contractor to come out to your house to do work and things like that. So there's a whole lot of little things that I think could add up to that.
Even prescription delivery?
Correct.
I'd say put a pin in the, the idea around home repair remodeling, grab bars. That's a whole other team that Megan's actually facilitating. So stay tuned for that in 2026. I like where your head's at.
Okay, so I mentioned that part of our agenda for tonight is to talk about a self-assessment that the team went through at about the six-month mark of working together. And so of course, we want to start with what, what was working well. And the team all agreed that they were really pleased with how they were handling the day-to-day communication. And some of that is just because there's some great technology through texting. I mean, just really basic stuff, the phone calls, the texting, and being able to use the SharePoint. They were really pleased with their interdisciplinary collaboration. And part of that is that there are really fantastic people on these three teams, and they respect each other's skills, and they support each other, and they really are looking together in the same direction for success of their goals. And then SharePoint, which is really a silly name for it because that's a software platform, not a program, but we don't know what else to call it. So we just call it SharePoint. But that database has evolved over the last six to nine months to really better meet the needs of these individuals, as John was explaining, so that they can keep each other up to date and really work well together and be efficient. And then those Monday meetings are, are important for just that consistent conversation. So what we're good at, but we want to be better, we're really starting to narrow in on how to create some efficiencies to prioritize those meetings and really wanting to make sure that we are leveraging the time the best we can. When we're sitting in a meeting, we're not out helping individuals. And so we don't want to overdo our time sitting in meetings, talking about those individuals as opposed to helping them. But it's a critical time to come together to really brainstorm and, and come up with ideas on how to help. We want to grow and improve our ability to respond to mental health. That should not surprise you. We want to improve the tracking, and part of that does come down to that data. And part of the difficulty that we have identified for our tracking purposes is the methods to make the contact. So going back to your question about do people decline? So the folks that are really hesitant to accept help, how often do we try to get them to accept help before we go, okay, I guess they're saying no? Or how adamantly did they say no before we, we move, move them to the closed position? And then because, and as John demonstrated with one of the, the examples, people do come in and out of crisis. So when they come back into crisis, let's say, because they have a health change or a home change. So when that happens, how do we successfully return them to service and do it in an efficient way so that we can pull up the information that we've already collected on that individual? There's a program called Prepare, which is a tool that we've been using, but it's not specifically for the 60-plus population. It's got some questions in it that are not as relevant as we would like them to be. And then, as we also have talked about a little bit, how can we support the CORF training for those non-L D C F M first responders so that we can help them feel really empowered to utilize the system as much as they possibly can? And then the non-CORF referrals, those outreach, both the outreach individuals that John mentioned, but also as time progresses, how do we handle if there's a direct conversation with someone at the hospital, for example, but that person doesn't go through our normal 911 channels? There are some reasons why we are only doing this through the 911 channels that we really don't have time to talk about today. But that's been a very important boundary that we decided needed to be set. And it really was to try and leverage the, the resources for emergency responders the best way we could.
I have a quick thought on that. I, the boundaries make a lot of sense to me. And the, the, to the point of acuity and for a bunch of other reasons that I'm sure would bore other people, but probably interests some of us here. I also, I think though, to your point about kind of trial and error and figuring out what these non-CORF referrals look like, just the simple tracking of like, who is becoming aware of the, of the three teams? And who at the hospital or at other healthcare clinics or other organizations in the community are bringing it up and asking somebody that they know from Project Lively, somebody that they know at the health department, et cetera? And that might help you source like who else it is, might be appropriate to, so as like a next tier of expanding that direct referral resource?
Absolutely, yeah. And because people do talk. And, and what we also know is that particularly in senior living facilities, individuals do share their resources with each other and give, give each other kind of tips as to how to, to succeed in, in their independent living. And that does come up.
Totally. And I think, you know, at some point, there's, I almost don't want to say it out loud, but like, there's a tipping point of, well, if 911 or EMS response is the only way to possibly get a referral, if you hear it sort of through the grapevine and it becomes, that's the, it's a really limited route in. You know, I, I don't think that that barrier is likely to really present itself, but theoretically over time. Like if word is out, which I'm going to, I'm here to tell you as a service provider, word is out. I hear good feedback about M I H, about Project Lively. And just, you know, like folks are feeling supported and responded to, which I really appreciate. So I think that over time, there will be interest from other organizations who are wondering like, how do I connect my client to you directly? And, and get those services in place without it having to be an EMS response first?
Well, to just give it, I'll be as brief as I can, the historical context of that. In the early days, Project Lively, there were no rules. It was, it was just the wild, wild west. And, and so that was part of the burnout that was discovered through our, our research as to what was going on in the earlier days of Project Lively. And, and so, because you're absolutely right, yes. So a lot of the other providers in the community were real sad when these rules were put in place because they were very accustomed to being able to turn to Project Lively with cases that were difficult or, or had a high acuity, or they just didn't know what else to do. And, and so kind of backing that off was really hard. I will say that, that, I mean, it's been a few years now. And the conversations that I have with a lot of those other community providers, they see it and they understand why there, there needs to be that limitation. And so our hope is that we are able to catch the people who are really at that high level of acuity because if you are struggling over here, you, there's a good chance you're also calling 111. Okay, so we're course correcting. One of our, our goals is to figure out the best way that we can send the right resource at the right time to ensure the best of the three teams responds first. So when you've got three teams of such fantastic individuals, any of them could probably handle anything, but we want to be really strategic about it. And so how can we continue to evolve, making sure that we're sending out? If it is a medical situation, it's got to be M I H. If it is something that's a, like a Medicaid application, it can be our community health worker. If it is a social work situation where they need to have some complex navigation, it can be our Project Lively. How can we try to do that the best we can? Tracking the outputs versus outcomes. I think this is every entity's challenge when it comes to this kind of work. And so it's really difficult to gauge our need for growth until we get a better idea of, of outcomes. So again, the longitudinal research on this is going to help us understand that better to figure out when it is time to maybe grow, grow more. And then collaborating with dispatch, the dispatchers to leverage their strengths. Our dispatchers in our community are so fabulous. And so how can we really work well with them? And then again, making sure that we've got the best assessment tool for the job. And my last one is accepting the things we cannot change, right? This is really important to me because I think we often get real hung up on the stuff that we can't make better. And, and sometimes we need to just verbalize it so that we can let it go. So we are limited by technology. We are limited significantly by confidentiality regulations. They are a real stinker. We cannot force people to accept help who don't want help. We are limited in the ability to offer housing or housing that meets the specific needs of a lot of these individuals, like in rural populations. And all individuals that we're working with are so different. The solution for one person is not the solution for the next person. And what we hear a lot is, oh, well, you know, this person has a similar, a similar challenge as another person. Can't we do the same thing? And often it's a socioeconomic issue, it's a psychological issue, it's, there's past trauma. It's really hard to say, but the, the same solutions don't work for all people. And then, oops, there's one, yep. Just analyzing the qualitative data is really hard and really time consuming. And so being able to have the, the capacity to do that is a challenge. And I'm done.
And so why are you limited by technology?
Well, I'll start real quick and say that the, the, one of the things that we didn't talk about is those CORFs are, go direct when, when you hit enter on those, they go directly into your M I R C record for a client. So when you log into M I R C as a trained user, you're able to see that if I'm the client and EMS, CORF was filled out for me last night, that would be in my record along with every time I went to the ER, every time I was booked in the jail, all the systems that we capture data from on a nightly basis that resets, that CORF has popped in there as well as one more set of data about what's happening to a client in the community. So that theoretically, if my case manager at another agency, whether that's DECA or Burt Nash or now Heartland Community Health, if they see that EMS responded to a call at my home last night and a CORF was filled out, they will be able to, they would ideally click on that and see, ooh, some things are going on with Jill. But that's not a closed-loop referral system. It's one system, it's a separate login. And that's, I wanted to make sure I flagged that, that M I R C is really foundational to a lot of this, but it is, it is not the end-all be-all.
And we consider that limiting?
We do.
Not having a closed-loop referral system that's really easy to use. And that's part of why this SharePoint, SharePoint has been developed. And I, I feel like, John, you should probably talk about that maybe a little bit. But before the SharePoint, it was really truly a barrier. And we were really struggling because there was no way to say, I have made that handoff. The handoff was received, this is what has happened next. It was, it was really frustrating.
And nobody has historically been in charge of this project. It has been an experiment in collaboration of getting all the right folks around the table with those Monday meetings. And truly from my perspective, having M I H at the table has been the, what has made it make progress a whole lot more because we have more of a proactive resource to complement the medical needs. the medical needs that go along with the Project Lively case management. We don't still have true ownership of this program. It is a three-teams collaborative approach that lives within our organizations. Yeah, sorry, that's a side note to technology.
So and if technology is limiting, how, and this work is so important, and we need data, and we need to prove that the work that we're doing is impactful, how can we support you in data not being limiting? How can we support you in a bidirectional loop? How can we support you in the integration? We have mental health sales tax. We know that you want to move in that direction. This work is, right, mobile integrated health. How can we support you in technology not being limiting?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons we identified as that an area for we want to code course correct and identify growth. There's probably ways we can solve some of the issues. Different issues are going to have different layers of complexity. Just for one example, LDCFM has a different patient care reporting software than some of the others. So it's very easy for MIH to get into the patient care reporting system that our EMS providers use. But if it's something that was seen by a different department, it's a lot more complicated. And there's a whole lot that's baked into that. It's not just a simple, it's not just the problem we solve with money. There also has to be, hey, we have to like go out and get consensus that this is the way we want to go. And that's just one part of it, you know, even so much as like, hey, because we operate for different organizations, you know, Megan had a heck of a time getting into the SharePoint, just because, you know, different security regulations, things like that, and we're trying to make sure that we're as open as possible while still being, you know, following all the confidentiality regulations and things like that. So I would say that I don't have a specific, oh, we need this one thing and it'll fix all our problems. We have identified this as an area that we want to continue to grow, and there's probably lots of different technological limitations that as we identify potential solutions we can bring to the table. I just don't have those like right now for you.
Okay.
Real quick, the last thing is, as we're trying to build on where we want to go, the next kind of example of where we want to continue to build on the progress we've made is opening the door to alternative response. This is a pilot program that's still being developed, but where we want to kind of go next with this. And so what you see here is the EMS incident dispatch code. So basically, this is not like a different call type, like a fall or a cardiac issue or something like this. This is every type of EMS incident that we get is categorized according to severity in one of the six categories you see there, where it's like omega, then alpha through echo. And so, you know, a cardiac can be a echo, or it might be a bravo. A fall could be a alpha or it could be a delta, just depending on how serious, what sort of communication is gotten through that dispatch assessing, through the emergency medical dispatching. And so when they categorize these, the omegas are really things that are designed from the beginning. It fits, it gets put in the medical bucket, but there's really not anything that suggests there's any like true medical component to it. It's just like, you know, broken fingernail or something like that. And then the alpha is also there's really low acuity, where we don't have any indication there's like a significant medical issue going on that's like the kind of life-threatening emergency that needs to be solved with an ambulance and an ED visit. But people don't know where else to turn, 911 answers the phone, we go out. So this is year-to-date data from the dispatch center showing that we had about 100 of those omegas and about 1,800 alphas. So if we were, this is, in my mind, that's the potential space where we could also talk about intervening and reducing call volume. So the idea here is like, instead of just having MIH respond after someone's called 911, after the ambulance and fire crews have been there, after the CORF's been submitted, we can identify specific call types and severity levels, we have them intervene at the front level as they're available to. So we start that process, for example, with a fall, instead of waiting for someone to have a couple of falls potentially and get a CORF submitted, and then we go out, they show up right there, they see, oh, this is a person who needs fall risk mitigation, we have these resources we can connect them to. We get a lot more efficient, we cut down 911, and we're sending the appropriate resource for that person. And then the other thing with that is, that's going to allow our MIH team to really focus on the high-value medical interventions that they can do that other agencies can't do because they're also trained as community health workers, and they're absolutely very good at all that work. But that is stuff that other agencies also have the ability. No one else has that mobile integrated health, community paramedic certification that allows them to do some of these things. And so if you look at this, if we were able to reduce those ambulance calls, now this is assuming that it would be staffed 24/7/365, which is not currently in our staffing, but that's where the potential would be to grow, is that if that's a place we wanted to go, you know, you'd see that our space of, you know, potential calls intervene might be about 2,000 calls a year. So like I said, this is a pilot thing that we're still kind of testing out, and it's still being developed. There's lots of learn, we'll be updating you as we continue to build into the space because we want to be very deliberative with the planning and implementation. This is a very important project. We want to make sure that we get it right, and we don't have any gaps fill up. So there's lots of issues, like again, with technology and also policies, making sure we've got really effective understanding with dispatch about what calls, what the process is for routing to MIH versus an ambulance. Also, will we have conceptual buy-in from our command staff and our medical director? As we go through and really iron out the details, we're going to go back and get a much more detailed plan approved as well. And then the other thing is, we just have to maintain all the core functions we're doing now, which is that responding to those CORFs, identifying the people for outreach, all of that still needs to happen. This would be something we would want to do in addition to that because we're getting better at connecting people to resources and coordinating with their other teams so that we can focus on some of those medical needs. And that's really where it's about expediting that handoff to social agencies and becoming more efficient. So it's something that I'm very excited about, that there's a lot of opportunities, and there's a lot of communities that are doing more in that space. And so I think we have a lot of room to grow. We're not going to grow overnight. We want to make sure we do it right, but that's something that I see coming in the future. And I think that's it.
I got two questions. Are MIH interactions with patients billable to Medicaid, Medicare, or private insurance?
Apparently do not bill for them.
The other question I had, and I think this would affect EMS more than maybe the other groups, but do you see the World Cup having impact on this program?
Question I had not considered. I would think that while we expect to have more population coming in, again, as a general, the population that is mobile and traveling for sporting events tends to be healthier and need less acute interventions. So I would expect the impact would be that, hey, there's going to be more strain on our services, and therefore, having the ability to connect people with non-EMS resources when appropriate is going to help the system overall. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was thinking you might be getting many more calls for visitors than the people who need routine care, if you will.
Yeah, absolutely. I expect our EMS call volume to go up significantly.
I want to follow up. I'm looking back at Jonathan Smith who's here because I believe, I believe there is potential for community health workers to bill at some point.
I know.
Can I put you on the spot, Jonathan?
Everybody, Jonathan Smith, Lawrence Douglas County Public Health. So our community health worker has, we have successfully billed with all of the MCOs and even Medicare Advantage Plan. So there was this myth going around that health departments couldn't bill for community health work services. So we tried it and it worked. So, yeah. So to your question about can some of this stuff be billed for, maybe not the EMS stuff, but for a community health worker stuff, absolutely.
Most ambulance billings around transport. So unless you're transporting, you can't bill.
I just want to say, this is phenomenal. This is fantastic. This is something that our community is really proud of, should be really proud of. The more they know about it, I hear from people just across the community that have interacted with this, with this system, and everybody speaks very positively about it, and probably the most so would be like the line firefighters who are saying, you know, we're not making as many of those calls that make the burnout because you feel like you're not making a difference because you're not meeting the need that's there. So I think making this integration is, was definitely the next step, and it's very exciting that we had these pools of things that were happening and now they're coordinating together. So I know it's really hard work, and I'm really proud of it, you guys.
I want to say out loud, and we may all be thinking it, but the other piece of that is the physical protection of those first responders. And for things like lift assists, I mean, there's probably some great statistics out there about the physical toll that takes on folks. And so if we're able to intervene with even just that one thing, and that's what got me excited about this long, long, long ago, was how can we help prevent those folks from having to go out for just lift assists and get more grab bars and get more rugs off the floor, you know, those types of things. So that's my other hope, is that this really helps to protect our first responders.
So we've talked about like how we wrap professional staff around folks to move them forward and have to be more stable. What's your interaction with either empowering community around folks, neighbors, family, and being able to get help to them that is a part of their network that maybe just needed to get over the hump to?
What I'll say is that going back to March of 2020, the Senior Resource Center started getting a lot of questions about how can I help? How can I help? And I started talking, anytime I had a chance, that the only way forward for our community because of the statistics of the population and the baby boomer situation, is neighbor-to-neighbor support and neighbor-to-neighbor assistance, and really encouraging people to make those connections in their neighborhood, to reach out to their older individuals in their neighborhood, but also for people to ask for help. And I think, so in the Senior Resource Center's newsletter, for instance, and any of the publications that I'm able to help with, I try to plug that, like, it's okay to ask for help. You should feel fine doing that. You're gonna honestly need to because there's not enough capacity. Our first responders do not have, and even with, and even if we grew the three teams to be five teams, I don't know, my projection on our population is that we won't be able to support the senior population in our current situation at all. And we have to really break down those barriers that people have, or the pride, honestly, that a lot of people have in asking for help. And, you know, the rural folks are some of the ones that I think about the most because they literally don't have a neighbor nearby. Every winter on our Senior Resource Center radio show, I'm like, hey, here's some ideas on how, when it snows, you can let your neighbor know if you need help. Get a system with a red piece of paper in your window if you need help and you can't get to the phone. So, you know, just trying to give really basic ideas for folks on how to break through that.
I think there's also neighbors and family that do support and help, but they reach a level that they can't get over that hump in getting a professional voice to come and say, no, really, this outside person also thinks it's time to move to town, or make a change, whatever that might be, I think is really helpful support to keep that neighbor and family system operating well.
That's one of the places that Project Lively really comes into play. They are tasked with the very difficult conversation on a regular basis of it's no longer appropriate for you to be living independently and to be aging in place, and then trying to help individuals find the appropriate next place to go and live.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? So this is very exciting. Appreciate the update. Collaboration is hard, right? And three different organizations at this table who all receive county funding, and what I think we can do as county government is bring you all together. And it's exciting to see those numbers start to tip the other direction. But more importantly, I think it's so great to hear that you're getting the services to people. You know, we have so many resources available in our community. How do we stitch them together so that it's most effective? I just appreciate the work that you're doing. I appreciate the data collection, specifically the way you're taking care of your teams so that they are communicating what they need, so that when sometimes we think, well, it's a very technical fix, it's the technology, it's the billing, it's all those things, it comes down to the people and all the people doing the work. And there's three great people here at this table and people back here in the audience, for those of you who are watching, who are doing really tough, tough work and working together. And I just want to say, I appreciate it so much. I appreciate your presentation, and thank you very much. Anything else, commissioners? All right, we'll take a break until our 5:30 business meeting.